Okay, welcome to the first meeting of 2022, January 3rd. I'd like to call the meeting to order and will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Bert?
Here.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Mayor Du Bois?
Here.
Councilmember Filsa?
Here.
Councilmember Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Here.
For the record, all seven present.
Great. So we have three items tonight. The first one is the election of the 2022 mayor. So this is the way, I'm just gonna outline how the, how it will work. So first I'll collect nominations from council members for the position of mayor. You can nominate yourself or another council member and no second is required. And then after collecting nominations, I'll invite people to speak in the following order. So we'll have the council member who made the nomination, the council members who are nominated, any other council member may comment, and then we will hear from members of the public. And then we're gonna vote similar to we did for boards and commissions using our phones or computers. We'll send it into the clerk. And then we'll, we'll have a new mayor and then we'll proceed with the vice mayor. So I'm opening the floor up for nominations. Councilmember Koo?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Vice Mayor Pat Burt for mayor.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Cormac?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Lydia Koo for mayor.
Okay. Do you accept?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cormac. I really appreciate it. But I think I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to decline. I really believe in the progression, so I really appreciate it though. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear you describe a requirement that the person accept the nomination.
Well, yeah, they, they can turn it down. Vice Mayor Burt said thank you, which they took as acceptance.
Thank you.
We've had people decline in the past. So were there any other hands? Okay. So would the council member that made the nomination like to speak?
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Pat Burt has strong understanding of policy and city government and a longtime advocate of, for environmental protections, for local economy, emergency preparedness and resiliency, social reforms and level-minded fiscal responsibility. Pat has been an involved community member in the private sector, then spending eight years on the Planning and Transportation Commission, then transitioning to be elected to City Council, where he spent nine years and being re-elected again in 2020, and then having served one year, you're like on to 18 years. Pat continues his work at the regional committees representing Palo Alto at the VTA Board to ensure focus on congestion management and also focused on Measure B, which provides funding for great separation and transportation. Pat also represents us at BCDC, the San Francisco Bay Area Conservation and Development Commission. Protection of the Bay has been a lifelong interest of Pat's. And with the concerns of increasing, increasing issues of sea level rise, it is important we have representation. As the pandemic continues, health and safety are top of mind. And Pat was always a step ahead to recommend ideas and solutions. For all these reasons, I ask for your support and to elect Pat Burt to be the 2022 mayor of Palo Alto.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Burt, would you like to speak?
Well, thank you, Lydia, for those generous words and, and, and I look forward to the prospect of serving the council and the community this coming year. We certainly still have many challenges ahead of us, but we've been on a path to recovery over the last year. And I believe that we're, we're going to continue that path and, and work on restoring our services and the, the other key priorities that we have as a community and as council priorities. Affordable housing, social justice and climate change. And I look forward to supporting my colleagues in our efforts. Thank you.
Would any other council members like to comment? Councilmember Stone?
I guess, Mary, I'll be supporting the nomination for Vice Mayor Burt for, for mayor. I second everything that Councilmember Koo just said, and I do think this year, still dealing with so many, so many incredible issues such as recovering from the pandemic and, and our, our recovering economy as well. And, and Vice Mayor Burt clearly has the experience. I didn't realize that many years. That is very, that is very impressive, but two terms as mayor as well. And it just really has the leadership skills, I think, to be able to help, help move us forward in, in 2022. So I'm really, really honored to be able to support and, and vote for Vice Mayor Burt for a position as mayor.
Councilmember Cormac?
Thank you. Mayor Du Bois, could I ask the clerk please to show on the screen the information I sent earlier? Thank you. So this was in the Daily Post recently and, you know, 35% of our community is Asian American and that's based on the last census, Asian American alone, not including those who marked mixed race. And 29% of our council is Asian American. If we do not elect Lydia Koo as mayor this evening, and it looks like we won't, it will be a minimum of 10 years since we've had an Asian American serve in that role. This will also mean an entire class of high school students will graduate from Gunn and Pally only knowing Ben in that role. And what does that mean? What does that look like for our girls? And what does that look like for our boys? So as you can see, four times in this century alone, and we can say century now, since we're heading in, we're in 2022, we've elected a mayor who was not vice mayor, and I wish we'd do that again tonight. Thank you.
So I'd like to add a few comments, you know, I just want to say Pat's been a great vice mayor this year. He's really supported me in the role. And, you know, with his experience as a former two-time mayor, I think we know he can do the job. He's extremely dedicated. He's extremely focused on sustainability issues and climate change. I think that's, I expect that's gonna be one of our priorities. I think it was the majority of council has already indicated that they were interested in that. So I'm really looking forward to a, a strong 2022 and really support your nomination. Any other council comments? Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I just want to add on to what Councilmember Cormac also said. You know, I had the pleasure of serving with Councilmember Koo on the Policy and Services Committee, and she did an amazing job. You know, the, the purpose of mayor or the person that's chairing the committee is, is not, that is basically to try to move the meeting along, actually the meetings are on time, to make sure that everyone's fairly heard, to make sure that all different perspectives are heard and debated. You know, I think they want to also encourage a diverse set of opinions and perspectives, because what we want to do, our job as city council members is to represent and make the best decision possible for our constituents. And I seen Councilmember Koo do just a tremendous job at Policy and Services. We talked, we talked about some really thorny issues. She handled them with grace. I, I'm sure that Councilmember Stone could also attest to this, that, you know, she ran running efficiently, fairly. She made that, she made sure that everyone was heard. She made sure that staff felt respected and was prepared. So to me, it just seems, I think to, to add to the points that Councilmember Cormac said, I think is spot on, you know, we, you know, 10 years ago, if you look at the last census, there's been a big shift. The Asian American community has grown significantly in Palo Alto. To the point, no, I think at the last I saw, it's like, it's basically the majority, right? And so to me, it's, it's a travesty that we don't have, we're kind of like a minority-majority city, that we don't have more diversity. I, I think, you know, I've, I've, I've had, I was elected same time as she was in 26, I've seen her service, you know, grow. I, I think she'll do amazing job. And I think also, you know, we've seen a lot of the Asian hate crimes. And, you know, and Asian hate crimes are racism, right? I still experience some of that. And, you know, I think representation is really important. I think that, you know, it's been a long time since we had an Asian American mayor. And so I, I for one, I'll agree with Councilmember Cormac, the Councilmember Cormac is spot on here. And, but of course, it's Councilmember Koo's decision, but I, I would strongly encourage Councilmember Koo to reconsider. Because, you know, I think a lot, a lot of people in the community would really back you as mayor. I think you'd do a lot of good. And I think Palo Alto as a whole would benefit, especially from your perspective. And, and for the most part, what I like, like about you most is just that you don't hold grudges, right? You're not vindictive. You try to be fair and make sure that everyone's heard and you move things along. So I think, you know, what more can we want in some of those running meetings? So I hope, Councilmember Koo, you could think about this and perhaps, you know, reconsider and stepping up to help serve the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I think now we'll go to members of the public. You can speak either here in chambers or online. And do we have any cards for people here in person?
Mr. Mayor, we have four members of the public who wish to speak in person.
Great. So our first speaker will be Mimi Wolf. To be followed by Caroline Garberino.
The voter or something about the mayor, but I'm ready. Yes, I'm Mimi Wolf and I'm a 34-year resident in Palo Alto. I live at 745 San Carlos Court in Midtown Palo Alto.
So just to be clear, we are speaking about the mayor?
Yeah, well, I'm not, I made it clear on my card that I wanted to speak about another subject, so I can wait.
So that'll be at the end?
Yeah.
We'll come back to that. Caroline, are all of these? Well, Caroline Garberino, if you wanted to speak to the mayor election, you can. As a general comment, you can speak during oral communications.
To speak about the 739 Sutter Project.
Okay, we'll come back to you. Thank you. Next speaker is Rob Levitsky.
Councilmembers, I'm pleased to recommend Pat Burt for another term as mayor of Palo Alto. He did a great job five years ago and has done well this past year as vice mayor. Pat is fair-minded, dedicated to Palo Alto, and carefully studies the issues to be decided upon. He no longer has a day job, so he has the time to look deeply into issues. For example, when the issue was letting people from other cities into Foothill Park, Pat wasn't just reading the staff report and letters to the council. He was regularly hiking the trails there to make sure that the council got it right with respect to maximum number of cars. Are the trails too crowded? Are the prices set fairly? Is the place getting degraded? So Pat put in the time and we've come up with a pretty good result for Foothill Park, and I support Pat for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker in chambers is Ed Mowing.
Yep, thank you. For the last five years, I've been on the Planning Commission. I do not speak in that context tonight, just as a private citizen. You know, the, the mayor's job is, is very complex. It needs a lot of unique skills to manage the agenda, to manage the issues, to manage the council, and the priorities of the city. The focus has to be on long-term, longer-term sort of strategic things, but there's also crises that come up and short-term things that have, have to be dealt with. Both skills are required. In, in short, the mayor's job is leadership, more so than just legislation. In my day job, I'm an executive recruiter who searches for just the right executive to fit the role that my client needs. And upfront, I always ask the client the same question. One year from now, what will success look like from this person? And with that answer in mind, I go out to search for just the right fit of a proven and seasoned executive to fit. I search for a candidate with a prior work history that predicts a high probability of that success as defined and very low risk of failure. I should be so lucky in my day job to have a candidate like Pat Burt pop up for one of my searches that is a perfect fit for the mayor's job. When you look at seasoned and, and past, and, and past, he's completely qualified by his prior resume, which of course, as everyone knows, also already includes having served twice as a successful mayor of Palo Alto. And he's completely dedicated to the people of Palo Alto and was the top vote getter in the last election as a result. I've watched him work with council colleagues. I've watched him hands-on work with neighbors, businesses small and large, and with city staff to again lead on finding creative solutions to lots of our problems. They still exist. So I, I support Pat as a mayor for '22 as an extraordinary fit. And it's basically no risk, high reward. Doesn't get better than that in executive recruiting. I think our community can be highly confident of his leadership this year, and he'll, he'll succeed for a third time.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna switch to our online commenters, and we will stop taking hands at this point. Let's see, so right now it looks like David Cole would be our last speaker, but our first speaker online will be Aram James. Sorry, I haven't done this in a while. Actually, I don't think I'm a co-host. Can somebody enable Aram to speak?
Hi, Tom. Good job as a mayor this year. Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, so Allison Cormac, Councilmember Cormac, congratulations to you on pointing out, you know, the fact that we do need a, a person of color, an Asian person in, in a leadership role. Lydia would be outstanding and Greg would be outstanding. And I, I point to his weekly office hours, and he's invited me twice to there. And we talked, you know, one time on reparations. He's not afraid of any issue at all. And, you know, he's open on topics that, you know, that, that, you know, shocked me, because I don't think I was a big Greg Tanaka fan until I realized that he's, he's, he's open to listening to dissenters like myself. And I think Lydia would make a great mayor. I think Greg would make a great mayor, and I think Allison would be doing outstanding job. Just this year, I had, and I don't remember the, the month, maybe Pat will do, remember that, but we had an online exchange by way of email, and I was very happy to see that he spent so much outreach time with East Palo Alto over the years. And to me, that's a critical factor. And if he is elected mayor tonight, then I, Pat, I hope that you can continue to do that. I was looking at a piece that I wrote back in January where also another really important issue to me was where the mayor, Tom and Pat jumped all over the, the, the encryption issue when the police chief that, I don't want to even say his name, decided unilaterally to encrypt. You all met with him and, and Ed Chakata. Now, I would have liked Ed to take a stronger action with the police chief, and I'll talk about that later tonight during oral comments. But, yeah, you know, and I do remember also, maybe you don't remember this, Pat, but I suspect you do. You came over when I was part of the group called Stop the Ban, and I actually led the, the little election event that, that afternoon, and, and you and I got a chance to talk and talk in front of the Stop the Ban group, and you came over to what was really a very small group, went out of your way. This was back in 211 to, to listen. And, and despite the fact that you and I sort of butted heads when you were, the first time you were mayor over some First Amendment issues. So I'm confident that if, if, if Pat's elected, he's gonna do an extraordinary job. And Lydia, I hope you'll step up to the plate soon in a leadership role. And Greg, same thing. And we'll, we'll go from there. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nadia Nyak.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep. Yes, I can.
Um, thanks. I wanted to throw my support behind Pat Burt for mayor tonight. He's been incredibly involved as a council member throughout the years, since I've known him. I first met him in 2009 on the High Speed Rail issue. And I think he will serve the city well, as does everyone on this council. I just want to say that I, regardless of race or gender, I have found most of the council members to be particularly involved. And as a Hispanic woman, I understand the importance of diversity, but I also believe that allies are key. And I think Pat has been an ally to all parts of this community, whether it's working on affordable housing issues or COVID-19 emergency, or youth services, or renter protections, or the connections with East Palo Alto that Aram James was just mentioning. Pat has fought for all Palo Altons. And I, I, I think it's a, it's really important to recognize that all of the council members have done that over the years. I have two daughters, and my daughters over the years have heard me spend hours with all of the council members. And I think anyone who puts themselves in a public service role is really sticking their neck out already. So my thanks to all of you. Whoever gets this will do great, but I would like to support Pat Burt. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arthur Keller. Arthur, if you could be able to speak now.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. My name is Arthur Keller, and I would like to thank, I'd like to speak on behalf of Pat Burt. I think he would make an excellent mayor. And I think that's why I want to say excellent mayor. A second, I say everything that has been said positively about him. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Karen Holman, I believe.
Hi, good evening and thank you for, thank you for entertaining us all this evening. I've known and worked with Pat for many years, as many of you know. I reached, run together back to neighborhood issues and involvement. I served on the Planning Commission as well as the council with him. I know Pat pretty darn well. He's smart and he's experienced. He's no stranger to that center, center seat on the dais. I think this is a good time for Pat to apply his knowledge and experience in both Palo Alto issues and processes, something that sometimes I think doesn't get enough attention. In this continued time of COVID, we need experience, commitment and intelligence to lead us forward. And to list just a, a few things that I know he will be the right person at the right time to lead us forward, is to put us on a course forward for a business tax. Long, too long a conversation here in a topic in which he particularly has strong basis. To apply his understanding of land use and planning to development, including Ventura, utilizing his SOFA background. He understands there's a relationship between housing demand and office development and applies statistics in balancing those demands. And this is a good time for Pat to guide, given his longstanding commitment to the environment in a time that more and more, we must make smart decisions. We always need the kind of leadership that understands people come first. That public service is not about ego or power, but rather balances the personal and political with what is the right thing to do now and long-term. I think Pat is, again, the right person at the right time, and I hope you will support Pat for mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Winter Dombok.
Yes, congratulations. I hope we'll be in order for a new mayor Burt. Or his 10th time as mayor. I get confused. I would be really pleased to have Pat Burt as mayor, given his deep knowledge and experience at serving in leadership roles. His time on the Planning Commission makes him, gives him a well of knowledge that few people on City Council have in terms of zoning, in terms of land use. We all know very well that those are areas come up time and time again for knowledge. He has served as a chair of the Finance Committee this year and when, and also when the budget hearings were happening and then the discussions at council, I appreciated so much that his was a voice and an insistence that services to people in Palo Alto be protected. And sometimes that got, that was a difficult conversation. And I really appreciated his insistence and that services, in fact, were protected to a much greater extent than it looked like they were going to be. Something else that his long, very long-term interest in the environment and in climate change, given our S-CAP goals, I'm very happy that he will, I know will be showing even more of a leadership role on those. And as we make difficult progress toward those goals. And he excels at complexity. And he has, it's difficult, I think, in leadership roles sometimes to have a vision. And Pat is a person that does have, at least to some extent, a vision about things. And I think that's very interesting to have a mayor for a year that does have that kind of attribute. I certainly appreciated his support for police reform, and that will be to some extent an ongoing thing. His protection of our neighborhoods, his interest and support for affordable housing. And so I'm looking forward to a very dynamic year with Pat as mayor. A, a year under the Burt regime. Thank you.
About a regime, but thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Rektal.
Thank you. I'm speaking for myself tonight. I, I think Pat Burt is an excellent choice for mayor. He has extensive experience as a former planning commissioner, council member and mayor, and served on various regional bodies. Pat is known and respected by area representatives, which will help ensure that Palo Alto's needs are properly addressed. I've been very impressed by the breadth of Pat's knowledge, whether it is our city zoning or the inner workings of Caltrain, VTA or Valley Water. Pat understands how and why things are the way they are. I'm also impressed by the manner in which Pat solves problem. He's not an ideologue, but bases his opinions on data. This allows him to examine each problem independently and also allows him to understand what conditions need to change in order for him to change his conclusion. That flexibility will be needed as the city continues to navigate through a very challenging environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Penny Yelson.
Good evening. I just want to say first of all that I'm grateful that Vice Mayor Burke has dedicated his retirement to serving our community again. And I extend that gratitude to all the council members. I know this is a huge time commitment for you. I just want to say that I've worked with Pat Burt for almost all of the 18 years of his experience on the Planning and Transportation Commission and City Council. And in that time, I've learned to really appreciate his ability to bring people together, to engage the community, and bring people to consensus around really knotty problems. And he does this through careful analysis of problems. He takes a careful analytical approach. He takes, he's a very capable financial manager and a gifted leader who listens carefully to people and, and helps them find a path to each other to find solutions. He's committed to things, shared values that people in our community have around sustainability and affordable housing. And, and as a former planning and And, and as a former planning and transportation commissioner, he understands transportation and land use planning. He has lots of experience in this area that will help us going forward. And finally, I've, I've seen him through financial crises before. I watched him on the Finance Committee during the last recession. And I have to say, I've watched him on the Finance Committee recently through this public health emergency that council has managed. And he really has had a very steady hand. And he has taken a very thoughtful approach without overreacting to crisis. And I, I think that that's the kind of leadership that we need today. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig, oh, I'm sorry, Laney Wheeler. And. Laney, you took your hand down. Okay, Laney, you should be good.
Now, can now, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for entertaining our public comments. Because of our city manager form of government, the mayor of Palo Alto is considered a ceremonial position. And back in the mid nineties, in the, in the happy times in the community, it was largely that. But as about to be outgoing mayor, Tom can tell, can tell you that in tough times, it's so much more than ceremonial. The, the mayor in tough times is required to have extraordinary smarts, poise, communication skills, a sense of purpose and creative ideas. Add to that the ingredient of experience and a deep knowledge of our community and our communities' wants and our communities' needs. That is your ideal candidate for mayor. That describes Pat Burt. And I'm pleased to support him and hope that you will too. Not only tonight, but throughout this next, this next year, as we continue to work our way through some tough times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig Lewis.
Good evening. This is Craig Lewis. I am the Executive Director of the Clean Coalition. And the Clean Coalition is a nonprofit organization that has a mission to accelerate the transition to renewable energy in a modern grid. And we work with many municipalities, including Palo Alto, but cities, counties, school districts, fire districts, et cetera, from around the state and around the country. And Pat Burt is one of the most sophisticated municipal leaders that the Clean Coalition has ever had the pleasure of working with. And I highly recommend him to serve again. And, and Pat's sophistication is really needed at this, this very important time with respect to transitioning to renewable energy, getting a grid modernization program in place in Palo Alto and lots of other issues. But, but I can speak to those particular issues as an expert. And I'll say that, that Pat's sophistication really spans from technical, both on the engineering and the economic side of things, to stakeholder facilitation. And the Clean Coalition has had to work with Pat. They have not had to, but it gotten the pleasure of working with Pat. And it hasn't always been where Pat was, you know, on our side. It wasn't always that Pat was, was with us before having to really soak in a lot of information and make, you know, very thoughtful decisions. And, and I'll just give a few examples of the programs we've worked with, with the city of Palo Alto on. And Pat was involved in, in all of these. The first was the Palo Alto Feed and Tear Program, which was, you know, seven, eight years ago. Another is the Clean Coalition was hired to design and administer the RFP process to get solar parking canopies on top of the city-owned parking structures and, and to put a whole lot of EV charging equipment, charging infrastructure in place at the same time while all that solar equipment was being, being put onto those parking structures. We are now leading in an effort to analyze the solar microgrid potential for the new life moves facility coming to Palo Alto. And the Clean Coalition is also leading a very significant effort to bring a Palo Alto community microgrid, to bring resilience, solar-driven resilience to the community and to critical community facilities like Coverley Community Center, like the Mitchell Park and Library, like the Stevenson House Elderly Care Facility, like the new fire station that's going to be coming adjacent to Mitchell Library. So I heartily and highly recommend Pat Burt as the, as the next mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evan Lurie.
Thank you, Mayor DeBose. I am joining you all this evening. I have the privilege to do so from the city of Pittsburgh. And that's not California, but Pennsylvania. And I, I couldn't decline the opportunity to join the deliberations this evening as the council determines our next mayor. I also want to echo thanks to all of our council members for their leadership and their selfless engagement guiding our city. And also frankly, to my fellow citizens who took time this evening to join this meeting and share their perspectives about Pat Burt's excellent qualifications to lead the city during a very challenging moment. I really do find myself tonight in distinguished companies supporting the nomination of Pat Burt to become the next mayor of Palo Alto. As you've heard from several already, he's visible, he's balanced, seasoned, accountable, a data-driven decision maker and can call upon a stable of relationships that have been cultivated frankly, over decades of civic leadership. I think that Pat especially recognizes that compassion at this time is a necessity, not a luxury. And I also simply want to share a more recent memory when Lumi Gardner encountered a very unfortunate set of circumstances and attitudes that do not represent what Palo Alto is about. When she was tending to an irate customer in FUKI sushi just this past August, that Pat was front and center in rallying the community to support Lumi and to broadcast what Palo Alto is truly about. So it's in part in that spirit that I rise to wholeheartedly endorse Pat Burt to become the next mayor of Palo Alto. Thank you very much for entertaining my comments this evening.
Thank you. And thank you, Evan, for not mentioning the Steelers are beating the Browns right now. Our next speaker is Bob Winslow.
Good evening, council members. My name's Bob Winslow. And I'm, I'm speaking at one level in support of Pat and his service as mayor. And then equally, I may not have the opportunity, but it's been an incredible year working with you, Tom, in your service as mayor and the work we did on our, on creating a sibling city. But I think what I wanted to speak to, and I may not speak to it perfect, perfectly, but I was really sort of exacerbated by this lifting up of the Asian American issue in terms of the leadership of, of our community. And I, there are times where my votes in dissension or votes not to endorse the, a particular policy or, or constructive. But I, I really am hopeful in this upcoming year that our council can come together. And as the previous speaker said, and as many of us know, Pat's an incredible leader that can work to join our community. But the, you know, the, the, these, sometimes these votes that are not in unanimity, you might think that you're marking your turf, but it, it impacts our community when we do not have the unanimous support in our leadership. So I won't change any votes tonight, but I really look forward to a time where there's more common endorsement of our leadership and that we can move forward, you know, as a, as a, as a stronger team. And, but to that end, I, I want to make sure that you all know I'm, I'm your biggest fan. I know how much work you do, but I, I look forward to a time where we all come together. And, you know, we could have everyone, you know, everyone endorsing our, our future mayor. And I hope that's how it comes out tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Cole. And then our final speaker will be Bob Moss.
Hello, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I will be supporting the nomination for Mayor Pat Burt. I was very happy to see that he decided to reengage with the city with all his experience in leadership and experience in the city when he ran for council last year. I think it is the perfect time to have Pat as mayor this year. And in particular for me, I look forward to his leadership in the area of climate change and S cap and moving that forward and faster than what the staff has today. And I think he's the person that can do that. As many people have mentioned, he is data-driven and really researched on every topic. And we're going to be able, we need to have to set in place the goals and the timelines necessary to meet our 80% reduction of greenhouse gases by 2030. And I think he's the type of leadership that we need right now to, to make that happen. So I support his nomination. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final speaker back in chambers is Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor DeBose and council members. I wanted to especially thank Mayor DeBose for his efforts in this extremely difficult last year. The pandemic that we're still suffering through is the worst international disease in a century. And it's created major unexpected problems, closing businesses, closing activities, making people like the council members work from home instead of meeting in person for most of this year and completely messing up the economy. So it's been a difficult year. And I thought that Mayor DeBose handled it very well, working well with his council members, with the staff and with the public, setting up meetings so that they were run effectively and getting this, getting the meetings closed at reasonable hours. I don't think many of you remember, but back in the 1970s, it's quite common for council members, I'll just pardon me, council meetings to last until two or three o'clock in the morning. I remember the latest, I think, a council member closed was 3:30 one morning. And I also remember at one, one of the former mayors saying that at midnight, he turned into a pumpkin. And so when the, when the meetings lasted longer than that, he would get up and leave and turn the meeting over to the vice mayor. So I, I think that the council has operated effectively this year. And I thank Mayor DeBose for that. I also welcome incoming Mayor Burt, who has a lot of experience in this community and the council and has worked effectively. And I think we'll be able to work effectively next year, this year. I just want to warn you that at some point this year, there's going to be some kind of a major disaster, which nobody has predicted. I can't tell you what it's going to be or when you're going to have it, but the disaster is coming. It happens every year. And I think Mayor Burt, Mayor to be, to be Burt, will be able to handle it quite effectively, just as Mayor Britten DeBois has. Thank all of you for your service. I appreciate the time and effort you put in. And looking forward to a successful council meetings this year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now it's time to vote. If you'll look in your inbox, there should be a email from city staff, from Danny, I believe. And if you can fill out the survey monkey and then the clerk will read out the results.
Mr. Mayor, we received all the votes from the council.
Yep.
And voting for mayor for 2022, council member Burt, council member Burt received votes from Burt, council member Cormac, Mayor DeBose, council member Phil Seth, council member Coop and council member Stone. And voting for no one was council member Tanaka. So Vice Mayor, Mayor Burt was appointed with six votes as mayor.
Great, thank you. Would you like to, congratulations? So Mayor Burt will be running the rest of the meeting. Would you like to say some few words?
Well, thank you, former Mayor DeBose now. I, I first want to really thank Tom for his leadership this past year as we've begun this recovery path and that will continue on this coming year. And Tom has really provided a great steady leadership. And I think we'll have an opportunity to speak to that on the third agenda item in greater detail. And as I mentioned before, and others have stated tonight, you know, this has been the biggest disruption to our community in decades. And we're not through it yet, but we're on a path to recovery. We have, we're currently facing a new tough patch in the road with the Omicron, but indications are that, that we'll be moving past that pretty rapidly. And, and we'll then continue to proceed on, on addressing the challenges that the council has set forth at the beginning of the year and, and I expect will be largely the council goals for this coming year. The last two years, as we've all been experiencing a different time, it's caused most of our residents to here and in other communities to really appreciate and value their local communities and what they mean to them to a greater degree than they ever had before. Many of the things that we took for granted, we now To a greater degree than they ever had before. Many of the things that we took for granted, we now really find are, are more deeply important to our lives. And yet, at the same time, we found many of those same services were cut over the last couple of years and reduced. Our businesses, many of the retailers have, have been impacted. City services from police and fire to transportation and, and libraries and community services were all significantly reduced. But we're now beginning the process of recovery. And we together, I am confident, will work as a council and as a community to restore those services. But I would like to say that one of the things that Mayor Du Bois had done this year in council meetings is to have periods of acknowledging the really critical and valuable community organizations that serve our community as well. It's not just a question of our city government. Palo Alto is what it is with the, the, the great things that we value here so much because of these incredible nonprofit organizations and local volunteers. And they're just innumerable, and they are the backbone of our community and have been even more important over the last two years. So I just want to really express appreciation for what all of those volunteers and organizations do to make our community what it is. And then lastly, as we move forward, we have four council priorities that we're inheriting this year and will next month look at whether we continue those or modify them. But we've, the first one has been on our economic recovery. To rebuild our services, to appreciate the very strong commitment that our staff has made to the community over the last two very trying years. And to get us back to where we are in, in, in our local services as well as our city government. The second is housing for social and economic balance. And the city has made significant progress on this, this last year. We not only have the Wilton Court project that was approved a year and a half, two years ago, that's fully under construction. But we have a life moves transitional housing project that we hope to launch this coming year. We have the teacher housing project on the county land at the courthouse for workforce housing for teachers. We have a project at 525 Charleston Road for very low income residents. And the council has just given a direction to pursue affordable housing above surface parking in the downtown area. On top of that, the council has increased impact fees to replenish our affordable housing fund and, and we have on the horizon the prospect of a business tax that could also help support those services. And then we have the issues of social justice that are not only in that housing justice, but others. We've in this last year, expanded the scope of the police auditor. We've had a series of reforms of greater accountability and transparency in the police department. We've had a new PERT program with the county that's just being launched to have social service workers work with the police on appropriate occasions. We, but we still have challenges. We're looking at how to restore greater transparency in our police communications, in part because of budget cuts. So our challenges are not over in those areas, but we are making significant progress. And lastly, as others have mentioned, the council is taking on climate change in a very strong way. Palo Alto and other cities like it, when they have been leaders in environmental initiatives over the decades and climate change in more recent years, have had impacts far exceeding what we actually do in our community. The leading cities are models and emulated by a whole series of other cities and communities. And, and so our impact is potentially significantly greater than our direct impact. But we're also needing to tackle the impacts of climate change that are already upon us, from sea level rise to the risk of mega fires. So these are real challenges ahead, but Palo Alto has an incredible history of taking on challenges, facing up to them, rallying the community and building the support that we need to really make the progress that we all believe in. So once again, thank you to my colleagues. I look forward to supporting your work this year. Thank you to Lydia for your kind comments and, and, and I look forward to the coming year working with all of you. And so on that note, we move to our next item, which is the election of the vice mayor. And who do we have? Councilmember Stone, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate my friend and colleague, Councilmember Coop.
Thank you. And any other nominations? Councilmember Tanaka.
Actually, Councilmember Stone beat me to the punch, so I was also going to nominate Councilmember Coop, so.
Great. So Councilmember Stone, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Yes, I will briefly. Thank, thank you. Well, Councilmember Coop was first elected in 2016 and has been serving really as a fierce advocate for issues such as sustainability, affordable housing, and always offering a truly passionate voice for our city's residents. And these are all issues that will continue to be, I know, on the top of our list throughout the remainder of this year and beyond. And yeah, I think her abilities to be able to look at the complex issues, to be able to examine these issues, to be able to listen to, to residents and stakeholders and nonprofits and corporations, as well as find, be a true kind of coalition builder is really going to, I think, mean a lot for our community to be able to strive forward. I mean, her, her leadership prowess over the years really bore real fruit this year as several issues that she has been fighting for, for several years really advanced forward, such as rental protections, as well as an updated and strengthened tree ordinance. As, as Councilmember Tanaka already mentioned, serving with Councilmember Coop on the Policy and Services Committee has also provided a great insight into her leadership abilities and her abilities to be able to truly chair a, a meeting. And I think she really proved her readiness to serve in this, in this leadership position. And not only can Councilmember Coop really effortlessly lead and manage meetings, but she just, she does it with such tact and, and grace and, and more importantly, just a natural kindness. And Councilmember Coop treats everyone with the same level of kindness that she treats her dog Socrates. And any of you who have ever seen Councilmember Coop with her dog will know she loves that thing with all of her might. And I've just been amazed to see how she takes that same level of, of care and compassion that she treats Socrates, as well as all of her family and friends, but also to just absolute strangers, to people that she may, that she may have differences of opinions on with staff. And, and that's the type of leadership we, we really need. Given, given some of the intense rhetoric that we've seen at the national and the state and the local levels, Councilmembers Coop, just kind of kindness and, and respect and empathy are all things that we really want to embody as, as a council, and she's going to be able to do that as, in a leadership position. And really glad to see, seems like this is going to be a, a fairly undramatic vote and glad to see that both Councilmember Tanaka and Councilmember Cormac have already voiced their support for your, for your leadership. So I really agree with their kind words already and just hoping that we can have unanimous support for, for your leadership. And so that, for all those reasons and many, many more, but I don't want to be like what Mr. Moss said, be here till 3:30 in the morning, talking about, talking about all of that. So for all those reasons, I urge my, my colleagues to support Councilmember Coop as our next vice mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Coop, would you like to speak?
Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Stone and also Councilmember Tanaka and Councilmember Cormac. You make me blush. But thank you so much. I look forward to supporting Mayor Burt. Congratulations. And I really appreciate and I'm very honored with this nomination. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And would, or do other council members wish, wish to speak? Okay, I, I have to rely on you to see them. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. I'm pleased to support the nomination of Councilmember Coop for vice mayor. As we heard earlier, I think it's long overdue. I actually just want to say that this evening is like my, this has nothing to do with you, Councilmember Coop. This evening is my least favorite of the entire year. This process is opaque and it's frankly become odious and it's unnecessary. Councilmember Coop every year suggests that we have a rotation process for mayor, and I will be supporting that this year at the retreat as I have before. Our neighbors seem to manage this with much less drama. And it's more straightforward. And so this is not about the people elected this evening. This is really truly about the process that this community has used over the past number of years. And I think it's definitely ripe for improvement. You know, I, I took the opportunity to reread our Equine Mission statement earlier today, and I encourage all of us to go back and take a look at that and, and think about whether or not we're really providing a respectful, fair and professional workplace for everyone. So I'm delighted to support you. And I wish you'd accepted for mayor, but I look forward to your leadership.
Councilmember Du Bois and then Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I'm very pleased to support Councilmember Coop as vice mayor. Lydia and I have worked together well for the last six years. And I really appreciate Lydia's focus, her connection to the concerns of the community. She often speaks up. I think Greer used the right word passionately. And, and she's really led on several activities this year. She's authored many colleagues' memos over the years, and so I look forward to her serving as vice mayor.
And Councilmember Tanaka.
So obviously, I nominated my colleague, Councilmember Coop, for vice mayor last year. Of course, she didn't make it, but you know, she should have been. She would have been awesome mayor this year. I nominated her as mayor, right? And I wish she would have accepted, but it is what it is. But I still think you've been awesome vice mayor. So, you know, continue to support you on that. And, you know, Councilmember Coop and Councilwoman Cormac have mentioned before about, you know, how other cities, it's just a, even our, even our school board, just a general rotation. And I have to agree with that as well. I mean, that seems to make a lot more, a lot less drama. But in any case, I'm really pleased to see that my colleague has decided to accept this, which is awesome. And look forward to seeing great things from her. So thank you.
Thank you. And if we don't have more speakers, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? See, our first speaker is former Mayor Liz Niss.
I feel a great deal like a masked bandit, to be honest, and all of you look sort of the same. It's interesting to come back into the chambers and think, who are these people? So congratulations, Lydia. It looks like you're going to be, I think, only the second Asian woman to serve as vice mayor. I don't, I didn't look up Yoriko Kishimoto. I'm going to guess she was vice mayor before she was mayor. But if not, you make, you may make true history. So congratulations to you. I did want to say, and congratulations to you, Pat. You will do a great job. I have no question. I want to make just a comment, though, to, to Allison Cormac's very excellent statements tonight. I'm somewhat concerned because while, while I was on the council, we tried very hard to keep a balance between what I would call the policies of one side versus the policies of the other. As much as I'm delighted with Lydia, I think Councilmember Cormac would have been an excellent balance this year working with the new mayor. So I, I regret that. We have felt in the past, in fact, as I recall, Eric and I worked mayor to vice mayor together. We were careful, I think, during that, that period of time to balance things. Allison, I hope you'll hang around and have the opportunity to serve in the future. And I very much support the idea of a rotation. Greg mentioned it tonight. It's been mentioned many times in the past. Maybe this is the year it will actually happen. So thank you again. Congratulations, Pat. Congratulations, Lydia. And may you have a wonderful year that is filled with, with prosperous endeavors and that things do come roaring back. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rob Levitsky. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to support Lydia Coop for vice mayor in her sixth year on the council. Lydia has demonstrated strong support for the underserved in Palo Alto and brings an international perspective to our city and understands social justice. Lydia is working to solve our jobs, housing imbalance. And she's often seen at the Cal Avenue Farmer's Market just to talk to citizens and understand their issues. So I strongly support Lydia Coop for vice mayor. And I also want to thank Tom Du Bois again for his great work as mayor this past year.
Next speaker is Arthur Keller.
I, I like to support, I like to speak in support of Lydia Coop for, for vice mayor this year. And I swear her, I hope she becomes mayor next year. And I would like to, I'd like to second everything that's been said for her. But I'd also like to say that Lydia Coop has been, has been the emergency preparedness. There's nobody speaking about her emergency preparedness work. That is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aram James.
Good, good evening. So, um, Lydia, congratulations. I was gonna, Arthur, still, what I was gonna say is, you know, I haven't been a Baron Parker for many, many years. I live in another part of town now. I remember how much energy you put in over the years to emergency preparedness, which, you know, is really a critical, critical thing. I support you wholeheartedly for vice mayor this year. I will say that I probably wasn't more angry that I, at any other city council member in the last few years than you when you attacked in an unwanted fashion, the amazing work of the NAACP. When you tried to stop the foothill park being open to the public. But that said, as other people have talked to you, when I've met you in person, you've always been kind. You've always been open. I hope, and I, you know, with, with Liz Niss's comments and also with Allison Cormac's comments, I, you know, I'm not quite clear. I get the sense that Councilwoman Cormac thinks that she's being treated unfairly. And if that's the case, then I really wish you'd speak out because I don't want anybody to be treated unfairly on this council. But I need to know a little bit more about why you feel that way. And as far as Liz Niss's comments about balance, you know, I'm more interested in whether people on the council can take positions they might not otherwise have taken in the past if they're persuaded by the logic that someone presents. So, you know, you might call yourself a residentialist or the opposite, but I, I'm just wondering, you know, how many of you, and I think all of you have this capacity, and I know Greer Stone does, because I've talked with him a lot of times. And I think at some point, he should be the mayor in this town and Greg Tanaka. Both of them have spent a lot of time talking with me individually, and I want to commend them. So I know that they, they deserve it somewhere down the line, sooner than later, leadership positions. But why do we have to have people on, stuck on positions regarding residentialists and, and the opposite? I hope that you're open to that. I would like to see, as an example, while the housing crisis is so dramatic for the unhoused, to have a tent city like so many other cities have. Instead of having the police department given sort of the go-ahead to move people out when they live in tents here. We can do it in an organized manner. People that are dying, you know, they had the, the annual memorial at the, the at the Santa Clara County Center this year, and I think it was close to 250 deaths this last year due to homelessness. So I hope that we take that on, and whether you believed in it last year or not. And again, Vice Mayor Koo, I know that you're going to do a great job this year. Look forward to your leadership.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Rektall. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm speaking for myself again tonight. Lydia, she's been a dedicated council member for many years, and I do agree it's time for her to help lead the council. I've had a lot of exposure to Lydia. She was the council liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission the last two years, and she's actively involved both in XCAP and NBCAP. In all cases, I found that Lydia does not take shortcuts. She diligently does her homework, and she fully understands even complicated issues. So Lydia, as some people mentioned, she is very passionate. She's very passionate about the city of Palo Alto, the quality of life Palo Alto. I look forward to seeing her passion applied to the position of Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen. I presume Karen Holman. Welcome. Former Mayor Holman.
Thank you. Yes, it's me tonight, serving as the prologue to Winter Dellenbacher scenes. It's great to hear Councilmember Koo receiving so many accolades this evening. They're so very well deserved and earned through hard work and commitment that she will undoubtedly continue to apply in this new role. I hope you will unanimously support Lydia for Vice Mayor. She's a council member who will do the work, who will stand up, who will take on large, difficult issues. I know no one who works harder for the community for those who live and work here. Lydia and I have not always agreed on issues, but I do know from experience that she listens. She has the highest of ethical standards, and she is willing to tackle the hardest of issues, such as housing, for those who need it most. I think Palo Alto will be very well served, so very well, with a mayor-vice mayor team of Burt and Koo. I can hardly think of a time when there has been a stronger, more talented duo in place. This pairing will bring diversity and collaboration to the pairing on many fronts, and we will be lucky indeed to have the varied experiences and talents of these two leading us forward. Former Mayor Lani Wheeler, who I have high regard for, spoke well and I think accurately about the role of mayor, and by extension, I will add the mayor-vice mayor team as anything but ceremonial. It is leadership necessary for best community representation and leadership while working with the city manager and staff. I encourage unanimous vote for Lydia to join Pat in setting agendas and setting a high bar with both passion and compassion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Winter Dellenbach. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. Well, Councilmember Koo, congratulations. It seems like you are our new Vice Mayor, and it's going to have unanimous support. I would not have foreseen that, but it's fantastic. You know, you were the pioneer of increasing renter protections. I think it was back in 2018 when you, when that happened. Just a second. And you, the city council majority back then, different than the majority today, that's for sure, didn't give you the time of day. They did not pass renters, more renters rights and renters protection, and you simply persisted. And it came up, and it came up, and finally, we got some sensible renter protections passed in this town. And I have been so pleased that you persisted, that you didn't give up. Tom DuBois helped with that, and certainly other council members currently on council supported that. But you showed such fine leadership, and so many people in this town are beholden to you for that, and thank you for that. As Karen Holman said, you really listen. Listening is a skill that so many people simply don't have, and you have it, you have a lot of it. And it's invaluable as a council member to be able to listen to people. And I really appreciate that about you. And something else I appreciate is that you, this year, as being the Chair of the Policy and Services Committee, were, played a critical role in tree ordinance, shepherding that through city process and making sure that that progresses and is, I'm going to assume, going to end up being a success, and Palo Alto is going to be able to protect more trees and be able to do it better. And I just, I think we're doing a very good thing. And I'm a little surprised to hear that somehow we should be electing mayors differently. And I certainly, when Liz Niss was on City Council, I never heard that there was a problem back then, electing mayor, so I'm a little surprised to hear that now. But I'm thrilled that you're going to be Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is a cell phone with the last digits of 733. Please feel free to introduce yourself.
Yes, this is Terry Holzmer. I first want to, I'm a little late to this meeting, but I wanted to offer my congratulations to Mayor Burt. I think his leadership and his knowledge of city matters is very important as we move into this next year, especially still recovering from COVID. And I'd like to offer my congratulations to him. Moving forward, I sincerely support the nomination of Lydia Koo for Vice Mayor. Her leadership, I'll just mention two things very quickly, two things that have been outstanding. She cares a lot about land use and land use development in our city, and she has led the effort to make sure that voices, local voices are heard, not only locally, but at the state level. Second thing, really quickly, is her leadership on the airport noise issue. For many years now, she's been the voice, I believe, on the San Francisco Airport Roundtable. And she's been leading the effort to really make sure that residents' voices are heard there as well. So I commend the nomination, and I look forward to her being elected Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's our final speaker. Councilmembers, we've received a SurveyMonkey poll for us to vote through. And while that's occurring, I'd just like to share my support for Lydia Koo as our Vice Mayor. I do so with great enthusiasm. It's hard to imagine anyone more committed to our community than Lydia and working harder on the council than she does, and harder to serve the community. And I think that we'll be well-served by her in a leadership role, and I look forward to working closely with her throughout this year. So does the clerk have results?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. All the polling results are in, and all seven council members, Councilmember Cormack, DuBois, Phil Seth Koo, Stone Tanaka, and yourself, Mayor Burt, have voted Councilmember Koo Vice Mayor for 2022 unanimously.
Congratulations. Yeah. So on that note, we go on to our final regular order of business, which is adoption of a resolution expressing appreciation for outstanding public service as mayor to Tom DuBois. And I have the pleasure of being able to read this resolution in honor of former Mayor DuBois. It is as follows: Whereas Tom DuBois was first elected to the Palo Alto City Council in 2014 and reelected in 2018, served as Vice Mayor in 2020 and as mayor in 2021. Whereas Tom was first, the first mayor in Palo Alto's 127-year history to give a state-of-the-city address virtually via Zoom, and also the first to do so wearing shorts. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, Mayor DuBois led a year of accomplishments that included economic recovery and restoration of city services, approval and start of construction of a seismically safe public safety building, and consummation of a regional partnership with Valley Water, accepting $16 million in funding for purified water recycling plant. Whereas as a strong believer in the importance of building community, Tom worked to resume and expand community events, including the Mayfet Parade, Asian American Pacific Islander Month, World Music Month, more than 20 events during Together Again Week, a sustainability workshop with representatives from Denmark and the consulate in Palo Alto, and many discussions on racial equity. And whereas Tom enthusiastically recognized and honored many community members for their contributions, including our local nonprofits, numerous city employees and community leaders, Good Samaritans who saved a young woman's life, and the national champion Stanford Women's Basketball Team. And whereas, to support recovery, Mayor DuBois met frequently with Palo Alto's business community, passed a budget to restore many city services, established an economic development strategy, affirmed retail protections, and reopened University Avenue to help retailers. And whereas Tom tirelessly, for residents, worked tirelessly for residents' quality of life, including new protections for tree canopy, accelerated planning of high-speed home internet, securing funding for the historic Roth Building as home for the Palo Alto Museum, and reducing commercial intrusion in neighborhoods with refinements to the residential preferential permit parking programs. And whereas Tom played a leadership role in advancing approval of the Life Moves 88-unit Transitional Housing Project, a 50-unit special needs housing project, a 525 Charleston, selective railway-grade crossing alternatives, and the completion and opening of a new bike bridge over Highway 101. And whereas Tom led on updating parks, open space, city services, and affordable housing impact fees, increasing renter protections, advancing a ballot measure to create a business tax, and establishment of a psychiatric emergency response team to replace reliance on police services. And whereas the mayor asserted the importance of local control, opposing state legislation detrimental to Palo Alto's environment and quality of life. And whereas during his term, Tom also served as Chair of the Council Appointed Officers Committee, which hired the new city clerk and supported a highly productive city auditor's office. We're getting close. And whereas under Tom's leadership, board and commission work plans were submitted for the first time and by annual meetings held with board and commission chairs in order to provide more effective advice to council. And whereas Tom fostered Palo Alto's sister city relationships, including Heidelberg, Germany, to propose new sustainability initiatives and achieve the creation of the first U.S. sibling city nationwide, culminating in a Palo Alto with Bloomington, Indiana partnership to help strengthen bonds within the United States. And whereas Tom's leadership as a public servant exemplified his integrity, passion, and commitment toward the betterment of this community, and his involvement in regional and global issues offered contributions that will be lasting value. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Palo Alto hereby commends Tom's outstanding public leadership and gratefully records both its appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens and businesses of this community for his meritorious service and commitment as a Palo Alto mayor. Quite a year. And we have this annual city plaque that goes to the outgoing mayor, and Tom, I'd like to present that to you. And do we need a vote on the resolution? I don't recall. Yes, so we do. And I would propose we do it by unanimous proclamation. If all in favor... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, skipping forward. I'm so enthusiastic about this. So next would be additional comments from council members and then members of the public. My apology. And yes. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Excellent. I'll be terse. So I want to thank Tom for his services, Mayor, for your services, Mayor. You've been thoughtful, pragmatic, balanced, a voice of reason and even creativity in what's been a very tumultuous year for all of us in our city and in our country. And although the council didn't always agree on everything this year, and frankly, we probably shouldn't, under your stewardship, I thought we generally worked effectively and constructively as a problem-solving group with thoughtful committees and priorities, and I credit both the council and Tom U for that. Thank you for your leadership this past year, and I look forward to working with you and our new mayor and Vice Mayor and the rest of council to keep moving forward in 2022. Thank you.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank Tom for his leadership this past year, especially coming in as a new council member. You, as mayor, I think, did a great job, not only being a friend, but a mentor as well, and helping kind of guide me through those initial months and making sure that I, you provided the tools to, well, I guess I was going to say Pat and I, but Pat is a new council member, but not 18, 19 years. So I really appreciated all that, and to go to Eric's point as well. I do think there was a true cultural shift that we were able to see as far as how we all worked well together. It was a council of kindness and respect, and this is not to say anything about House councils, but just to join a body that worked so well, did, I think, was a great model for the world, that political bodies, that we can work respectfully together and address the really difficult issues. And I agree, and a lot of that was just, I think, the natural personalities on this body, but your leadership really made a big difference there. And listening to all those things that you were able to accomplish and lead on this year was, it was truly an honor to be able to serve with you in this capacity. So I thank you for your leadership, and I'm so glad you're here for another year at least.
Vice Mayor Koo.
Oh, that sounded weird, but thank you. So, Tom, it has been a great pleasure to have you as mayor. I want to thank you, Tom, for your hard work and time representing Palo Alto and still working full-time. You seem to be at so many ceremonies, grand openings, speaking at high schools, painting fences at National Service Day, leading the Together Again activities to celebrate the community for its resilience and strength, adding to our sister cities, hosting conversations about racism, supporting and participating in events to celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I really thank you for your support on that. But not only were you at the ceremony events, but you were also present at important policy issues, always prepared. Under your leadership, we made some important progress: tree protections, fiber to the home, supporting local businesses, restoring services in the budget, bringing back CUBLY to the discussion, and on the state level, questioning our Reno allocations and state legislation that preempts local governance and voter rights. As I said, it was a pleasure to have you as mayor. You are practical, authentic, inclusive, transparent, and fair. Thank you for caring and just working so hard, especially during this unsettling time, to keep focused on public service and Palo Alto's quality of life. Thank you.
And Councilmember Cormack.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. Outgoing Mayor DuBois, thank you for taking your turn at the head of the table. I have seen, long before I was on council, every time someone serves as mayor, I feel that they have grown in their appreciation of complexities of the work that has to be done and the reality that our professional staff is here, day in, day out, night in, night out, working on it. And I've certainly seen that growth in you this year. And I'll just add that nobody else has mentioned that Mayor DuBois was the first who had to manage hybrid, like, you know, promoting people and all that. It's one more thing to manage when you're chairing the meeting, and I think you did it seamlessly. it seamlessly, welcoming people back in a hybrid mode. I know that was a priority, and I'm very happy that we did it so promptly.
Thank you. And I think that completes the comments so that we can now vote and all in, oops, oh, I'm sorry, we do have members of the public, members speaking, I'm sorry. There we are. First is John St. Clair III.
Good evening, everyone. This is actually, I think, my second time actually standing at this podium, making any comments whatsoever, but it's because of Tom. But my name is John St. Clair III. I am the vice president of La Camita Singing Nutritional Program. And a lot of people may not know this. I mean, Tom has done just incredible amount of work this year, but he also, La Camita had incident where, last year, in 2021, around Christmas time, where one of our cooks, family members, actually got COVID. So we shut down the kitchen, our volunteers, we quarantined everybody, and then we reached out for new volunteers and, you know, and catered the meals. Well, we gave Mayor Du Bois a call, and he was one of the first ones that jumped up and said, I'm there. And also, his beautiful fiancee joined us, and they worked for about a week with us, you know, the days that we were open. We, and in addition to other volunteers from the emergency services on their program, we staffed all of our volunteers and got the program back up and running within twenty-four hours. And we wanted to say thank you, Tom. We know you're busy, and you are so passionate about Palo Alto, the residents here, and all that goes on here, and we just want to say thank you for what you've done for the city and that you've done for us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is supervisor and former mayor Joe Semidion. One moment. Are you there now?
I believe I am now, Mr. Mayor. How am I doing?
Great.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to add my thanks to Mayor Du Bois and tell him and you all what a pleasure it has been and how productive it has been to work with Mayor Du Bois during this past year. The range of issues is extraordinarily wide-ranging, as your earlier comments suggest, everything from affordable housing to transportation to mental health and police reform, and the happy opportunity to finally cut the ribbon on that bike bridge after all these years. It just goes on and on. I suspect that most members of the public frankly don't realize how frequently and how well the city and the county partner together, but it really is made much, much easier by having good partners to work with, and that certainly includes the city, and that is in no small part a result of the opportunity to work with a council and a mayor who want to be part of that partnership. So again, my thanks to Mayor Du Bois, my congratulations, of course, to you, Mayor Pat Burt, and Vice Mayor Lydia Koo, and my thanks to all the council and the staff with whom my office and I have worked over these past many months. But again, Mayor Du Bois, take some pride and satisfaction, I know you will, in the work of this past year. And if I may presume to do so, Mr. Mayor, I would like to recommend that the council approve the resolution that you have before you, thanking the mayor for his service over this past year. Thanks so much. It's good to be with you all.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Aram James. Welcome.
Yeah, how you doing? Hey, Tom, you know, the first time we actually formally met, I believe, was when we started talking at the Midtown Coffee Shop, when you, right after you were elected the first time as a council member, about the safe parking program. And we talked about the Santa Barbara program. I had been fortunate enough to go down there and see it firsthand. And sure enough, this year, I'm looking at Janani Shanir's article in February of 2021, after you and Lydia had proposed back in 2019 that we start the robust safe parking program in combination with the county, we got the Gins Road Safe Parking Program rolling. So that's something that should have been put on your plaque, but I guess it just got too long. And the other thing I wanted to say about you, Tom, is that I really appreciate it on a human level, when I bumped into you and your mom occasionally, at least your mom one time over at Bull Park, and I had my mom around, and we got a chance to meet each other's moms. And equally important, my son Louis and I used to walk over at Bull Park on a regular basis together, and we ran into you and stopped and chatted, and, you know, you were not stuffy, you were just a regular guy, and I kind of got a good feel about you. So congratulations on being a good mayor this year. And you actually told me in an email late in this year, probably in October or November, that you read all of my emails. And that's a pretty amazing feat for you to work full-time, be the mayor, and listen to some of my emails on a wide variety of topics and police practices and stuff. So I'm going to keep pushing you while you're on the council to be all you can be in terms of making sure this police department that we have is more accountable, that we live up to more resources for the unhoused, and just look forward to seeing you on the streets as well. Thanks a lot, Tom.
Thank you. And our next speaker is seven-three-three, which I believe is Terry Holzmer.
Yes, this is Terry Holzmer. I just would like to sincerely thank our wonderful mayor of this past year, Tom, for his strong support of residents, especially over the last seven years of his service. His dedication to the Palo Alto community, and I mean the entire community, has truly shown on a daily basis, and especially as he has served as mayor this past year. No one, I believe, has cared more, volunteered his time more, or given more effort into helping residents, especially in this recovery period of COVID, both mentally and physically from the pandemic. I have appreciated Tom's efforts to launch the Sister City program locally, I mean, in terms of the U.S. and Bloomington, Indiana, home of the Indiana University, and in his strong belief that local governments, elected officials that are elected locally, should control their own land use development. He has been a real promoter of that, and I want to thank Tom for all his hard work this past year. This has been a tremendously difficult year with the pandemic, and yet he has worked very hard to serve citizens and to do the best job that he can. Much appreciated by everyone who loves this city. I know everybody appreciates you, Tom. And go Browns.
Good luck. Thank you. Our next speaker is Isabel LaSalle. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Isabel, and I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Mark Berman. Outgoing Mayor Du Bois, Assemblymember Berman asked me to convey his heartfelt thanks and congratulations for your service as mayor. In the face of immense uncertainty and hardship, you led the city to some huge successes, including a number of historic infrastructure accomplishments and the city's launch of its psychiatric emergency response team. So thank you again for your dedicated service to the city, and congratulations to Mayor Burt and Vice Mayor Koo. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is State Senator Josh Becker. You should be connected now.
Sorry, I think we're, excellent, excellent. Yeah, I just wanted to say, add my thanks to the mayor for his work. You know, I was just saying that for all of you on the council, I know how hard you work in normal years, and I know how difficult it has been for these last two years, and how much extra work making really tough decisions affecting businesses, affecting schools, affecting the health and the lives of all of our constituents. So I just want to thank all of you, and for Mayor Du Bois particularly, want to appreciate some of your work, including the bike bridge, which was very fun to be there for the opening of the incredible project, the Life Moves Transitional Housing Project, helping to advance that, the fifty-unit special needs housing project at five-two-five Charleston. I would appreciate your efforts, particularly for those and just their overall efforts, your overall efforts on behalf of the city and the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Winter Dellenbach.
Hi, I feel a little funny speaking so often tonight, but there's so many good people to speak about, I can't help myself. Good job, Councilman Tom Du Bois, good job. You know, you really showed grace under pressure as mayor. You kept the meetings rolling along with a minimum of drama. That was refreshing. Thank you for your continued leadership this year on police reform and support for expanded independent police auditor's oversight. You know, I think I know better than anyone how instrumental you were in police reform. We had some serious conversations about that, and I will forever be very appreciative of you because you were very serious about this, you really took time, you applied all your analysis, all your skills, all your intelligence to this, and you really listened. And I think our town will forever be a better place because of your willingness to treat this very seriously. And for that in and of itself, I think that your leadership on that alone was held, holds you up head and shoulders. Also, your insistence, again, about the tree ordinance, getting it out of mothballs, three years it sat on the shelf, and you taking it off the shelf and saying, no, we're going to do this, we're going to get this moving, and it's going to progress, and it will get done, is very much appreciated. If trees aren't the essence of Palo Alto, I don't know what is. So thank you very much for that. And people have talked about the sister city thing. You brought that up at your State of the City address. You said, hey, I have this idea, we should have a sister city, a sibling city, it should be in the United States, and it's going to, the idea would be a blue state, red state, let's start a conversation, let's see if we could bring people together. And I just thought that was such a smart idea, and you're just such a good guy, your intelligence, your sense of humor, you just have a personality that is unique and rather wonderful, and you have a light touch, but you're deep, and I so appreciate you having been our mayor, and you're just a really good guy, Tom, and I'm glad we have you for another year on the city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Arthur Keller, to be followed by our final speaker, Karen Holman. Welcome, Arthur.
Thank you. I would like to give my thanks to mayor, the current mayor, the outgoing mayor, and I'd like to thank you for your leadership, and also I'd like to thank you for shepherding the bike bridge across one oh one to completion since it was first proposed by me in 2010 to finally completed eleven years later. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, former mayor Karen Holman.
Thank you. And also, sorry to speak to all three, but kind of hard to speak for one and not all three. So, Tom, job well done. What I said about mayors earlier applies to how you led this past year, that we always need the kind of leadership that understands people come first, that public service is not about ego or power, but rather balances the personal and political with what is the right thing to do. And you do and did just that. You put people first. It's been a hands-on job for you. You jumped in with both feet, with efforts to restore much of what had been lost in the first year of COVID, by restarting events, bringing music to town and to the forefront, supporting retail and restaurants, and by honoring local nonprofits and persons that make a difference. It's something that I hope will continue. It's so very valuable to this community and encouraging of others. You often solved proceedings and meetings with your humor. You always added your intelligence and values, such as making Palo Alto's tree ordinance a priority, something this time of climate change we desperately need, honoring our history and making this a safer place for everyone. I frankly don't know how you did so much, given you have a job, a partner, in addition to your duties as mayor. You served and represented this place well locally, across the country with Bloomington, and that new sibling cities program, and internationally in Heidelberg. You spanned the globe, and your service and leadership is very much appreciated. Thank you, Tom, and I'm very glad you'll still be on the council, representing us as your community. Thanks so much, Tom.
Thank you. And I'm told we have one final speaker, Maura Oomen. Is that correct?
Thank you so much. Sorry, I was in the middle of trying to feed my daughter, but I just want to jump on to say thank you, thank you so much. Mayor Du Bois, you were a wonderful mayor this past year. It was wonderful to partner with you on so many events, and you led the, led us all through putting together World Music Month instead of just one day. It was your vision, and we were happy to support it. Thank you for bringing us all together to have a wonderful week of Together Palo Alto, and your leadership on the AAPI Heritage Month was also really wonderful. You brought us all together, you made a place for youth to shine and to celebrate when it was a rough year for them. So on behalf of youth community service and myself personally, thank you for all you've done for us, and I look forward to a lot more fun times together as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who has spoken, and I think now is the time for the proclamation. And I would move by unanimous consent, and so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And Tom, here is a copy also of your resolution. Great. And I realize that at the completion of the vice mayor voting, I should have turned to Vice Mayor Koo to see if she would like to make some additional comments. So at this time, I'd like to do that.
Thank you so much. Again, thank you to all of you for your unanimous vote to elect me as vice mayor. I just wrote some things here. We have an extraordinary community here in Palo Alto, the residents who are engaged and participate to protect our natural environment and resources, including backyard habitats, the preservation and protection of our mature tree canopy, to the impacts to help from airplane noise and pollution, to the telecommunications, 5G installations with aesthetic and health impacts, to residents who support safe parking and providing feedback and win-win recommendations with research of successful safe parking programs from other cities, to those who support people with disabilities and to ensure they're visible and inclusive within our community. We live in an amazing town. It is time for the community to have realistic discussions. Frankly, the pandemic has given us evidence about space and keeping it local, as Mayor Burt had mentioned. I believe there is consensus in the community around addressing our transportation and traffic issues, sensible housing growth that addresses the heavy cost of living here while respecting the trees and the natural environment and resources, service and infrastructure, supporting our local retail and personal services, continuing to move forward on economic and environmental sustainability, addressing racism, and protecting our neighborhoods and the physical attractiveness of our city. and the physical attractiveness of our city, its uniqueness and residents' quality of life here. As vice mayor, I intend to work closely with the mayor, council members, and the community to achieve and staff, to achieve our shared vision of a livable Palo Alto, and would ask, well, that was before, but thank you.
Thank you. So before, oh, that's my voice comments as well.
Yes.
The floor is yours.
So I just, I realized about halfway to, one good thing about masks is you can't see when I'm blushing. I want to say thank you to everyone for attending the meeting tonight and your comments, not just for me, but for everyone on council. And congrats to our new mayor and vice mayor. And it's, the meeting's gone a little longer, so I'll try to shorten my comments. But I just wanted to say, first of all, that none of us does this alone. Every council member dedicates hundreds of hours every year to serve the community, and it really requires the support of our family and friends. And I see some of my family and friends online. And so I just want to say thank you for supporting me and, you know, really helping me to be able to do this. And secondly, I want to really thank our city staff, the people that report directly to the council, just Ed and Molly, Leslie, Kyle's online, but all the other staff here as well tonight. So thank you. When you're mayor, you really get to see how hard our staff work. You get to see a little bit more behind the scenes than you do as a council member. So, and it's really the people that work here that make Palo Alto such a great place to live. So I just wanted to take a second to recognize the staff and say thank you. So it's really been an honor to serve as mayor this year, this last year. It really is an enormous privilege to serve this community. It's an amazing, highly educated, very involved community. It doesn't make it easy, but it certainly keeps it interesting. I also want to thank all of my colleagues for a very productive year. And, you know, while the pandemic continued, and it continued to take a lot of our focus, one of the things I think I'm most proud of, if you compare 2021 to 2020, is how much we were able to get back to regular city business. We were still dealing with an emergency, but we didn't let that consume all of our focus. And we were able to get a lot of programs, policies back on track. I also wanted us to work well as a council, treating each other with respect, and on the whole, I think we did. We had a lot of 700 votes, a lot of 61s, a lot of 52s. Perhaps our most divisive vote was on the budget. And usually by the time we vote on the budget, it's passed unanimously. But this year, we passed the budget with a 4-3 vote, which just indicates, I think, how difficult it is to make decisions in a rapidly changing environment without a lot of information. But I think our collective intelligence made the right call, as we later saw both the US economy and our local economy bounce back. And overall, I think we planned appropriately. Most people don't really know that in addition to Monday night meetings, all council members serve on an average of seven other bodies throughout the year as part of their council assignments. Councilmember Koo, as she has for the last several years, has served on the most. But I want to thank each of you for all of your work this last year. Councilmember Koo, thank you for your work as Policy and Services Chair. You were really the driving force between the month, the month-long Asian-American events. It was fun to work with you on that. You've written a lot of colleagues' memos focusing attention on social racial issues, strengthening local democracy and control, and a memo on the Roth Building. And you demonstrated your leadership on the tree ordinance, as has been mentioned tonight. Councilmember Filth, thank you for your charts and graphs. Seriously, your clear thinking helps us very often. You led on the housing element and housing targets. You provided a lot of insightful analysis. And on the budget, you keep us focused on long-term structural challenges. Councilmember Stone, in your first year, you have many colleagues' memos on the Roth Building, US Sister Cities, policies to strengthen neighborhoods, local democracy and control. And you tend to be, I think, our leading voice in helping those less fortunate. You spoke eloquently on the need for transitional housing for our homeless population. Councilmember Cormac, thank you for chairing the Finance Committee this year, as well as being on the Climate Change Ad-Hoc, which has been very busy. Here, thank you for your colleagues' memo to strengthen neighborhoods. And you're often thoughtful clarifications and additions to motions. Councilmember Tzaka, while I don't think you initiated any memos this year, you often present a contrarian viewpoint, which does help make us make sure that we consider all views as we evaluate the motions before us. And then Vice Mayor Bird, again, I mentioned it earlier, but I wanted to thank you not only for your work on council, the progress we made with grade separation funding at the VTA, your work on the budget, and your leadership on the Climate Change Ad-Hoc, but also just for your support to me in your role as vice mayor. It's really been great working with you this year. So if you bear with me, I did want to take a minute or two to reflect back on this last year. You know, I've personally done my best to focus on the recovery from the impacts of the pandemic, really in all of its forms, the health of our residents, but our economy, our city services, and our city workforce. I'm pleased, as was mentioned earlier tonight, that we did move forward with several. We have 100% Affordable Housing Project at Wilton Court, the Charleston Affordable Housing Project for people with disabilities. We did move very quickly collectively. I think we all supported our Home Key Project proposal, and we've continued to support the teacher housing project. The housing element is really moving along, and will be in front of councils soon. And we also moved to increase renter protections. You know, my time on council, I know, infrastructure can be really tough, particularly in years when the budgets are stretched. So I'm very proud that after many years, we approved and began construction on the Public Safety Building. Obviously, the bike bridge took a number of years, but it's happy we got to open that this year. And we did really move forward on many significant initiatives, including our broadband utility, our smart meters, and other infrastructure like road repair, park improvements, you know, all while we were dealing with COVID. We also really made significant progress on our railway grade crossings, limiting the number of alternatives. And we got agreement with the other cities to have 50% of the Measure B funds allocated to Palo Alto, which is huge. As I think it was the vice mayor mentioned, we continued to work on our policing issues, increasing the role of the police auditor, strengthening the duty to report. And we're the first city outside of the county to begin the psychiatric response program. I do want to mention one of the areas that I do hope we continue to make progress in in 2022 is increasing police transparency, with our press having access to real-time updates, and also just our senior police officers responding to phone calls from the press. So outside of council business, I did outline items that I personally wanted to focus on in my State of the City address, and I did my best to deliver on all of those goals. So making progress on sustainability in our climate action plan. We now have a very active working group. We have active engagement. And we held an excellent workshop at the end of the last year with the officials from Copenhagen and Denmark. I wanted to emphasize community, and we held many events throughout the year, started online, we moved to in-person, mostly outdoor. And I really want to say thank you to all the volunteers and the staff that helped make those events happen. And then, it's been mentioned several times, but this creation of the first US-based sister city relationship as a way to build bridges within the United States, which came together about a month ago, finally. I really look forward to seeing that relationship blossom this year. So thank you again for your trust and support of me as your mayor. I really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed the opportunity to work for the people of Palo Alto. All of us are here in public service to support the people of Palo Alto. And so I look forward to just resuming my role as a regular old council member and working with all of you this year. So thank you.
Thank you. And before we adjourn to a sort of reception, where I understand we're going to have takeaway cookies so that we can all remain masked in the chambers, we do have the final item, which is public comments on items not otherwise on the agenda. And we have two speakers, it looks like. Mimi Wolf is our first speaker. Welcome. And you will have up to three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Well, I want to congratulate Mayor Bird and Vice Mayor Koo. Thank you very much for serving, and thanks to all of the council. I know it's a huge commitment, and you put in a lot of long hours in the dark. I am a 34-year resident of Midtown Palo Alto at 745 San Carlos Court, behind the Midtown Safeway. It's a little street. It's, you know, has speed bumps, and it's a private drive, and it's just like a haven from all the traffic and noise of Palo Alto. But I am addressing the council tonight because it's regarding a development on Sutter Avenue, which is the next street over, 739 Sutter Avenue. And there is a preliminary meeting about this proposal in November. And I was a little surprised, but that the Palo Alto residents in that area, San Carlos Court and other neighbors, were not invited to the preliminary meeting. So I wanted to just address some of my concerns tonight, so that, for the record. Anyway, for one, the development is potentially requesting several concessions, more than three, which is allowed, for the, one of them is for the standard daylight plane of 10 feet initial 45-degree angle. And this is one of their concessions they're requesting. And so if this one is approved, it could result in shading the backyards of the San Carlos properties. And another part of their development is to add a second-floor deck to that, the back part of the development. And he did not, and the developer did not specify if this would be in facing Sutter Avenue or facing the backyards of San Carlos Court members, which would definitely intrude on their privacy. And then, there's a plan for vehicle access to garages that is also substandard, which would, could pose a problem for the fire trucks. But also, I think it might cause problems for the residents of the development, because if it's not, if it's too narrow, they may choose to park on the street rather than use the garages. And so there's, the development is to increase from eight units to 12 units. So this could increase the number of cars, not only in the development itself, but on the street parking. So if the, if the members, if the residents of the development do use street parking, which is already at maximum in the evening hours, it's going to cause some problems of overflow parking.
We don't have the light on.
We have another one that Caroline will address some other issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next speaker is Carolyn Garberino. Welcome.
Honorable council members, my name is Carolyn Garberino. I live at 734 San Carlos Court, and I've lived there for 25 years. I'm one of five cottage owners who have fences abutting 739 Sutter, a proposed three-story, 12-unit condo project. The initial project from the ARB meeting shows that it does not comply with the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. We asked the city planner to invite us to the initial ARB review, but we're neither invited nor given a website to check for a date. Now, please see the municipal code regarding failure to notify homeowners of meetings. Please look carefully at these 10 issues that arise from this proposed project. Public health and safety will be adversely affected by increased traffic 800 feet from a school. There are minimum daylight planes, as Mimi described, which will result in a lack of privacy for five adjacent properties. That harms public health as well. Removal of multiple large trees is necessitated in gardens. Eight gardens will be removed from Palo Alto's urban canopy. This contributes to adverse climate change. Property values for residents of San Carlos Court, abutting this project, will be decreased due to the above public health dangers. Open site space on this proposed project is 20%, when 35% is required by law. Concessions or variances are exceeded. Three are allowed, and the developer is asking for nine. Height is exceeded. The developer is asking for 36 feet instead of 30 feet height maximum allowed by law. There are no plans for solar energy or heat pump water heaters to be installed at the construction. An adverse precedent will be set. To date, Midtown Palo Alto has no three-story buildings. This project will set an adverse precedent for public health, safety, our rights to sunlight, and especially our right to privacy. I personally would like to put solar panels on my house. If my house is shaded for half a day, I cannot do that. Low-income housing, of the 12 units proposed, only two units are reserved as affordable.
I'm sorry, Ms. Garberino, we don't have our light to notify you, but we've passed the three minutes, so if you could just wrap up.
Okay. We urge the City of Palo Alto to join with Cupertino, Los Altos, Monte Sereno in taking a stand against California legislation that takes local control of new development away from cities. And we ask you to look very closely at the 739 Sutter project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is listed as Esther. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Esther Nihanda, Palo Alto resident. I strongly second the comments from all speakers regarding former Mayor DuBois. Congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor, and thank you to all the council members for your service to our community. I have three neighbors on Garden Drive in their upper 90s, one who is totally blind, and being out and about is quite daunting for all of them. Two of them have caregivers 24/7. We were thrilled and grateful when Palo Alto paramedics vaccinated them at home in early April. We've all heard that the risk to the coronavirus increases with age, and my neighbors are anxious to get the booster. By now, they have been waiting for an in-home booster for over a month, and they and I have contacted Santa Clara Department of Public Health a couple of times. Two weeks ago, the caregivers were told that my neighbors might get the booster in six weeks. Frankly, that worries me. Just last week, one of their caregivers called in sick with the virus. Fortunately, they didn't develop any symptoms, and two quick COVID tests three days apart read negative. But with Omicron being so contagious and caregivers rotating in and out, they may not be so lucky next time. I am requesting that the CDC, if Palo Alto paramedics can again do in-home shots much sooner than in the timeframe they've been given. In the great scheme of all you do, it's a small matter, but it would mean a lot to my neighbors and me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, were you able to take a note of that and whether we we might be able to follow up?
With respect to that planning application, yes.
No, I'm sorry, with respect to the in-home vaccination booster.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that as I was still on the last.
We'll brief then.
Very good. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Aram James. Welcome.
Welcome to, welcome to you too, Mayor Tom. I'm sorry, Mayor Pat. I know you're going to have a great year. Listen, Ed, I hope you're listening in on this one. It's important. My number one priority for the council for this coming year is going to be something Ed can do by himself, and that is to fire our current police chief. You can have all the police reform you want. You can tweak all the policies that you want. But if you don't have police accountability, it's of no moment. It's, the Daily Press does a lot of work, I'm sorry, the Daily Post does a lot of work. They've uncovered the Julio Alvaro case months, months and months after it occurred because our police chief didn't disclose it. The Joel Oliva case, which was just settled, we don't know the amount. The Gustavo Alvarez case. We've talked about the encryption matter that the chief did unilaterally. You know, we're talking about implication, you know, attacks on our First Amendment, the press's right to that First Amendment, us as citizens, attacks on the Fourth Amendment, that is, the right to be free of illegal searches and seizures. Look at Mr. Oliva. Fourteenth Amendment, the right to equal protection. We're talking about, and this is a strong word, and maybe it doesn't apply quite strictly here, but an insurrection by the police chief. Insurrection is, we really think of as, you know, one violent attack, but really, it can be the drip, drip, drip of the destruction of a democracy. And the police department, when it becomes a secret police and decides to do things when it chooses and when it doesn't, that's an insurrection in terms of our constitution. That's a destruction of our constitution. And I know, Pat, that you're a strong cross-examiner. I hope that you will cross-examine this chief that is unfailingly polite as a cover-up for his destruction of our constitutional right to have transparency, to have our First Amendment rights respected in reference to encryption and a variety of other matters. It's a critical matter, not just at the federal level. We all know, and you guys know best of all, you, you, public service issues start in local municipalities. This police chief has been diabolical. He's not paying attention to you. Ed Chicago can fire him, but you can also put pressure on Ed to do that. I'm just now starting my thinking process on this issue. I'm going to develop it as we go into our priority session setting and throughout the year until that chief is gone, gone, gone. Thank you.
And that concludes our public comments and our meeting for this evening. Thank you to everyone in the public, in the, in the Zoom space and here in person. And we look forward to moving forward on addressing all of our many challenges and opportunities for the coming year. Thank you.